Okay, I'm looking to you, Olivia. We'll get to go, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor Gamble. Counselor Gamble is absent. Counselor Burley. Counselor Burley is absent. Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Counselor Carlton is present. Counselor McQueen.
Present.
Counselor Desai.
Present.
Counselor Patterson.
Present.
Counselor Columbus.
Here.
Warden Hicks, I'm here. Counselor Keveney. Counselor Body.
Present.
Counselor Leary.
Present.
Counselor Woodbury.
Present.
Counselor Milne.
Present.
Counselor Soever.
Present.
Counselor Morning, Allison's regrets. Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
So we have all members and attendants with the exception of Counselors Boarding, Y'all, Campbell, and Burley.
Thank you. We'll turn next to the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Ania Shinnabeck, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat, Wyandot, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Métis and the Inuit, whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Item number five, declaration of interest. Counsel, is there any declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. At the October thirteenth council meeting, I declared a potential direct interest with regard to an item that was on the October thirteenth closed session. You'll see on the agenda as five B, or rather six B, County Council closed session minutes of October thirteenth. They are on this agenda. I want to make it absolutely clear. I did not attend the closed session meeting. I did not participate nor vote. I also did not read the minutes that are on the agenda. So, and I will not be voting on these, these minutes as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Seeing none, if one does come up during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. All right, so we're on item, item number six now. Six A is County Council and Committee of the Whole minutes dated October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Millen, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Any discussion? I call the question. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you. Item six B is County Council Closed Meeting Minutes dated October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I need a mover, please. Moved by Counselor Keveney. And seconded by Counselor, well, we'll go with the Deputy Warden. Any discussion? What's so funny? No, I didn't say Carlton. No, I don't. I think I've got the Keveney and Carlton thing worked out now. Hopefully, I did. And I honestly, I mean, no disrespect in that confusion. It's this brain. I'm now working on a cash and a lar. That's the new A and A thing that's. Yes, yes. All the shades of gray. Okay, back to business. We're ready to call the question, right? All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you. Item six C is the C O Performance Evaluation Committee Minutes, which are dated October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Moved by Counselor Body and seconded by Counselor Hutchison. Any discussion? Called a question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Why can't all meetings be like this, right? Item six D is the Closed C O Performance Evaluation Committee Minutes, which are dated October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two as well. Moved by Counselor Leary and seconded by Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? Any opposed? That too is Carrie. We have no closed meeting matters, and we have no reports, and we have no bylaws. Turning to item number ten. Good news and celebrations. Well, lots of people are celebrating, and some are not, not so much celebrating. But Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I just wanted to bring to Council's attention that this Saturday, there is a Halloween dance in Flashington at the Kinplex being put on as a fundraiser for the Hanley Institute. I believe it's dress up as your best costume. You might see Batman there, or you might not. I don't, I don't know. But it is, it is for a great cause. Hanley Institute does a lot of good work with youth in Gray Highlands, as well as across the region of South Gray. And so I do hope we can, we can go ahead and support them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Notwithstanding the threat of Batman in tights, I do want to give a shout out to the TAPS department and Pat Hoy and his staff. Gray Road Eight is complete, I believe, and it is a wonderful road. They did a great job on it, and I know a lot of people are looking forward to using it. That might come as a shock that I'm actually praising the TAPS department, but no, you guys did a great job. Thank you very much.
TAPS, you know. Old acronym, yes. I don't know if that was a compliment, or it was, okay. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I would just like to identify that there will be a trick or treat trail around the downtown of Durham on Saturday, October twenty-ninth, from twelve to four. And the kiddos can collect tricks and treats from local businesses and community groups. Hope Paul can attend. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Desai.
Sorry, I forgot that we're not meeting until November tenth again. On November fifth, which is a Saturday, the day after the Worden Gala, I should point out, there is a, a series of radio plays that are being put on at the United Church in Dundalk for the benefit of the Dundalk Food Bank. I will be part of one of those. And if anyone wants to see me act or try to act, please do come out. Admission is by donation of either cash or non-perishable food item, which will go straight to the Dundalk Food Bank. And again, I'll be the star performer. Thank you.
Hold back, hold back. Okay. I do not see any other. Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The Chatsworth Agricultural Society is having Halloween in the Village on October thirtieth from one to three. There will be wagon rides, treats, and photo ops for, for family members and prizes for the best costumes. Thank you.
Thank you. Final survey. Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, County Council. I better not forget all the other parties are going on. Rockland Agricultural Society is having a trivia night on Friday night, not to compete with you guys. So it's, it's the best, best, best group dressed up for Halloween as well. And also, the Priceville Community Center is also having a Halloween party on Saturday night as well. So there's lots of things that everybody can go trick or treating on in Gray County. So, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Scary times. Counselor Keveney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. And Meaford is also having a Halloween event on Saturday organized by the businesses, and and they'll all be decorated and dressed up and giving out candy for the kids on Saturday. And I just want to remind everyone about our Meaford Dragons event taking place on November the third at Meaford Hall. Tickets are still available. Twenty-five dollars and five dollars goes into an Audience Choice Award. So that's, it's a big event, the biggest driver of, of new businesses in Meaford. So if anyone can attend, we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I need a, we're moving to adjournment. So can somebody please move? Moved by Counselor Woodbury, seconded by Counselor Robinson. All in favor? Any opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Let's switch over now to Committee of the Whole. Olivia, do we need to take a pause? Okay, call the meeting to order. We're now meeting as Committee of the Whole. It's October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there any declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none, I will just simply say again. Oh, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Your Worship. I do have a pecuniary interest on. Item five B, the Tanship and Southgate Official Plan. Since I am employed, Southgate.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We'll move on then. Item three A is the Committee of the Whole. October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, notice of motion by Counselor Soever. I'll maybe ask, are you going to move? Counselor Soever moves. I, I need a seconder to put the item on the floor. Seconded by Counselor Mackey. And Counselor Soever, you now have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And I'm bringing this motion because I became aware that our seniors were not aware of our program to provide for the cancellation of tax increases for the purposes of relieving financial hardship for low-income seniors or a low-income person with disabilities. And we did pass this program back in May of two thousand and twenty-one. And the bylaw states that all applications made under this bylaw shall be made to the treasurer of the local municipality in which the eligible property is located in a form as set out by the local treasurer and must be received by the local treasurer no later than December thirty-first of the subject year. So I did look into this and having heard this from our seniors that they weren't aware of this program. And so I did on October third, send a letter to all nine treasures in Gray County and asked them if they could direct me to where I could find the form for their municipality. And I also asked if that they could tell me if they've had any uptake of the program, just to try to find out how, you know, how serious the problem is. And I only heard back from three of the nine treasures. So you can imagine if you were a senior and you heard about the program, you know, you, I would hope that there, you know, I did send it on my Gray County email that with, you know, the proper. So they knew I was a counselor asking for it, if they could direct me to the forms. And I didn't get a response back from six of the nine. So, you know, that was a bit concerning to me because I thought of, well, if you're a senior and you don't know the system or how it works, and, and you were to email in, would you get a response? So that prompted me to decide to bring this motion forward and that the county staff be directed to advertise and otherwise communicate that this program is available so that low-income seniors and low-income persons with disabilities become aware of this program. And that they also assist the lower tiers because it's pretty obvious to me that six of the nine don't have the necessary forms so that they can meet the responsibilities under this bylaw. And, you know, it does point out the difficulties in a two-tiered system where county sets these tax policies. And, you know, we put this in place for good reason because, you know, the people that are on the G I S are very low-income seniors. You know, when they do have a tax increase, it is a hardship on them. And so we decided as a council here in May, two thousand and twenty-one, to, you know, update our, that program. And, and now it's available to anybody who has a tax increase, no matter how small. And, you know, the, these people that are on G I S may be fifty or a hundred bucks isn't a lot to some people, but if you're on G I S, it's, it's a lot of money. So I think, you know, I'm bringing this forward now so that, you know, our seniors can be aware of this program. I mean, this year, tax increases were pretty small. Given where inflation is, I'm sure that there will be budget pressures on all municipalities going forward in the next year. And next year, increases might be a little bit more substantial. And I think, you know, educating people that this program exists and is, and that they might be eligible. You know, I think it's a good thing to do. Now, obviously, there's a bit of work to administering this program. But, you know, if we put it in place, we should, as a council, also make sure that, you know, it is made accessible to the people that it's designed to serve. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Any other? Mary Lou, did you want to say something? I'll come to you next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. When we had the conversation with the member municipalities last year, our tax consultant from M T E recommended that we not put it on the county website because it would be confusing to people and make them think that the application process was here. But we certainly could do so and redirect them to our member municipality appropriate webpage. Probably the most, the easiest way to make people aware would be as part of your insert with your tax bill. So when you send out, if, if you do send out inserts, a lot of people have the, you know, here's how you get services, here's how your tax bill is broken up between the upper, the lower, the education, et cetera, you know, and what your local is made up of. You could have something on that tax insert, or you could have something on your website. I think perhaps there is a misunderstanding that we didn't consult or that we didn't provide. We did. So the consultation began before Kevin retired. And in May last year, we had calls with the member municipalities and M T E, and we did provide a sample document as well as a sample application. And so we had the discussion on June fourth. Or we sent in an email on June fourth. We had a meeting on June sixteenth by Zoom. And we had another email exchange on July eighth, based on the, the conversation that happened in the June meeting. And I hope that helps to explain like what we did provide and the support we were providing through using M T E. Because M T E had been through this with other municipalities. One other place I guess we could go is we could ask M two-on-one if, if people are calling and saying that they have financial pressures, that they could be made aware of the program. I'm happy to answer anything else.
Thank you, Mary Lou. I'm going to come back to you. I think there was a hand, or Counselor Mackey. And Counselor Desai.
Thanks very much, Mary Lou, for that, that input. What the treasures, all Gray County, your lower-tier treasures and yourself meet on a regular basis? Has this been a topic of conversation at all? And would that be an avenue to get the forms out that are necessary to all the treasures? Because I had forgotten about this until Counselors Soever brought, brought it up. And I just don't remember anything ever coming to our lower-tier council table in regards to it. So I'd like not to lose sight of it and make sure that, you know, each of our lower tiers, I, I agree with you that the advertising probably should be done on our, our local lower-tier websites. I'm just not wanting to lose sight of this. And how do we make sure that whether it's an email sent to all members sitting around here to get action taken at their lower tier? But it is an important issue that needs to get communicated. But I, I believe it is up to us at the lower tiers to do that. And just want to make sure we have a process in place that happens and doesn't get lost. So I guess the only question I have, how could you communicate that with our, our treasures and, you know, at your table?
We can certainly send an email out reminding them that they did have sample application forms. At the upper tier, we weren't looking for it to be prescriptive, that they had to use a form that was set out by us. There may be other information or a different format that they wanted to use. I don't have a fall meeting set yet. That's, I'm getting a little past fall. It may be a, a late fall meeting. But I can certainly follow up on an email with them. We did survey last year, partway through the year, to see what the uptake was. Kim reached out to the CAOs, and I had asked the member municipalities in the summer if they could let me know, and all nine did respond. And I, in total, they had four applications totaling a hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. And they were from Gray Highlands and Southgate. And at that point, I did not ask whether everyone had it posted on their website or whether they were using an application. I took that as a reminder, though, that when I asked, it would be a trigger if they didn't have something. But I didn't go to their websites and personally look.
Thank you, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Thank you, Mary Lou, for that. I'm a bit chuffed that Southgate and Gray Highlands both have advertised well enough that we did have applicants. But I also think it's an important, timely motion from Counselors Soever to bring it, bring this up at this point because of the tax pressures, the budgetary pressures we will have going forward into the next year. Very often, we, we hear around the, around, not just the council table, but even at the public meetings, we hear from people who say, we've got to think of our seniors who are on fixed incomes. This, we have this process. We have this available now. So we really should be saying, well, yes, we have thought of them. We are protecting our seniors from increases. And at the same time, we also do have to look at the future and consider the infrastructure that we're leaving for the next generation. So I am very happy that Counselors Soever has brought this up as a reminder as we're going into the next tax season. Thank you very much, Warden Hicks.
Back to you, Council, oh, Counselor Millen.
Not wanting to drag this out, but I'm wondering, maybe a, an amendment or a friendly amendment to point number one in the motion. Rather than directing county staff to actually advertise, why not direct county staff to continue to encourage the local municipalities to advertise and otherwise communicate? I think that would capture the spirit of what Mary Lou's talking about. But at the same time, I share Counselor Soever's concerns about making people aware that this program exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Millen. I see a nod from Counselor Soever with respect to your friendly amendment. And I'll come to you. I'll let you speak, I promise. And I'm just looking to Counselor Mackey to see if he's also in agreement with that. Madam Clerk, do we need to do anything? Okay. And sorry, just to remind me again, the, the changes to, to encourage.
Be directed to continue to encourage.
The lower tiers.
Lower tiers to.
Okay, the staff will be encouraged to continue, to encourage. I said encourage twice, but you get it.
Directed to continue to encourage.
Right. Advertise and otherwise communicate. Good? Counselor Soever.
Yes, I'm very happy with that amendment. And certainly, you know, I think the responsibility for this does lie on the lower tiers. And as, you know, they do collect taxes on behalf of the county, that's their responsibility. And their, their responsibility is also to implement pro, programs like this that are, are brought forward by the county. Clearly, something has gone wrong here, and I don't think it's the fault of anybody when you have two cooks in the kitchen to say, you know, it's, it's possible that, that things sometimes do get missed. So, you know, I think it's great that, and then, you know, my question is, you know, how are we gonna make sure that they do that? I mean, I'm sure that the county does make sure that the taxes every year are collected by the lower tiers for the county. So how, what mechanism do we have in place to make sure that the lower tiers are actually implementing these kind of programs? That, you know, the county is responsible for putting in place, and the lower tiers are responsible for implementing. Like, clearly, that seems to be where the gap has happened here. Clearly, that seems to be where the gap has happened here. Is that, you know, you have one level of government putting. The policy in place and then the implementation is left to the other tier. And then how do we make sure and whose responsibility is it to make sure that? It actually happens.
I might suggest that, um, the the resolution that that comes out of, um, today's deliberations be circulated. To the clerks of the member municipalities and be brought forward, um, to your new council's first agenda. Um, as something that they can, they're aware of. And if if it went on your consent, for example, then it could be pulled and discussed if it was. Felt to be necessary, but otherwise that would make all members of council and thinking that there's been some changes around the table. It would be a, uh, a good, um, item to, uh, let, make sure that everybody was aware. And, uh, and you could have internal discussions if those were required at your own tables.
Very good. Thank you. I think it's time to call the question on the amended, uh, recommendation. Which is that staff be directed to continue to encourage the lower tiers, uh, to advertise, in other words, communicate. And on and on. All right, we're ready to call the question. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Okay, item number, uh, four are delegations and we have none. Number five, uh, we're looking now to the consent agendas. Anyone have any? Items that they would like to have pulled? If not, denial, entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda moved by councillor Hutchison and seconded by councillor O'Leary. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you. All right. We're on to item seven A. It's puts Randy on deck. We're dealing with the development charge deferral and conditional exemptions and challenges. With mortgage financing, and this is actually a really interesting one. Uh, which you're about to hear about, and, uh, I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by councillor Body, seconded by councillor Milne. Randy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much and, uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, I think it's equally interesting, uh, the potential of this topic in that. Uh, some of the changes that were recently announced by the province and how this could have an impact even to this report and how. It shows you just the the changing landscape, uh, and and how quickly it changes, uh, or potentially changes. Uh, when we're trying to bring as much information forward to to council to make informed decisions. So. I'll try and capture some of that towards the end. Um, we're still reviewing, uh, those proposed legislative changes. We will be bringing a staff. Report forward to, uh, to this, uh, council in November tenth, just to provide an overview of those proposed changes, but. What what is before you today is a report to highlight some of the challenges we're facing as it relates to the development charges, deferral and conditional exemptions. The council may recall that the purpose of, uh, the, uh, the D C deferral and conditional exemptions was to try to encourage more purpose-built rental housing. Uh, developments, because at that time we were seeing very little, uh, purpose-built rental housing developments, uh, across the county. So this was seen as a way to encourage more rental housing by conditionally exempting the county's development charges. To date, the county has entered in a total of eight, uh, development charge conditional exemption agreements. This includes a total of three hundred and thirty-one, uh, new rental units, which equates to approximately one point four or five million in in development charges. The challenge we face to date is is specific to developments that receive funding through the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation. Or C M H C, as I'll refer to them here and through. Um, C M H C at this stage is not willing to provide financing for development projects. With the potential that the deferred development charge amounts may become payable. At some point over the life of that conditional exemption agreement. So the way the D C conditional exemption program works is that developers that are proposing rental units. They enter into an agreement with the county, which requires that the rental units remain as rentals for a period of at least twenty-five years. Uh, from the time of building permit. So as long as the terms of that agreement are met by the developer, then the D Cs are exempted, uh, following that time period. The notice of the agreement is registered on title as soon as possible, and this ensures that there are no surprises in the future. Uh, about possible future D C payments if someone were to do, for example, a title search on the property. Or, for example, the ownership of the property were to change hands. During the time period of the agreement, the D Cs remain in a deferred state. And if the development charge amounts become payable. Uh, which essentially means the developer defaults on their terms of the agreement. Then the deferred D Cs take priority over mortgage financing, similar to the way that property taxes do. So based on these deferred development charges remaining on the book, so to speak, uh, and that they stand in priority to other encumbrances or mortgages. C M H C does not wish to have this level of risk when we're providing that financing. So based on this, uh, two potential options that staff see to remove that perceived risk. The first option is that the developer pays the development charges in accordance with the Development Charges Act. And and in accordance with the D C bylaws. So if the project is a rental, a housing project, they would qualify for a deferred payment plan. Which essentially would, uh, break out the development charges that are due. Over six equal annual installments over a five-year period. Um, and that would start at time of occupancy. So the first payment is due at time of occupancy of the first unit that is occupied. So that's one option. Cause then it gets rid of the the risk, cause the D Cs are paid. The second option is to use discretion regarding the timing of registering the notice of the agreement on title. Um, to the property and staff would suggest that that be no later than the time of occupancy. And that would be subject to the approval of the C O or delegate and the Director of Legal Services. So this would allow C M H C's lender to register their mortgage on title, and then the D C agreement notice, uh, could be registered after that. It should be noted with respect to this option, the development charge exemption obligations still remain outstanding. And legislatively, any resulting charges that would become payable would continue to stand in priority. Uh, ahead of any other encumbrance or or mortgage. However, if the lender feels that by not registering the agreement. Until time of occupancy makes a difference to their perceived risks, then this could be an option that could be considered. Although this issue has been raised by C M H C to date. Uh, staff could apply the same approach if we ran into similar challenges with any other lender or financial institution. The risk of not registering the agreement on title until time of occupancy is quite minimal. Uh, as the opportunity for the developer to default on that agreement, uh, during that construction phase is is pretty much non-existent. So as I mentioned, to date, this challenge has only risen, uh, with mortgage financing through C M H C. And part of C M H C's mandate is to provide funding to support affordable and market rental housing projects. And their main goal is to make housing affordable for everyone. So given this, the report also recommends that the warden send a letter to C M H C requesting. Uh, that they can reconsider their approach of not providing financing when there's those outstanding deferred D Cs. Uh, that have been conditionally exempted. And and the reason for that is is we feel that the goals of the county and C M H C align. In that we want to try to make housing affordable for everyone. So as as I noted earlier, as you've probably heard in the news, uh, over the past couple of days, the province has announced some further changes, uh, to various pieces of legislation. And this is in order to encourage more housing to be built throughout the province. As I mentioned, we're still going through, uh, and digesting all those changes. Uh, there's a number of changes that are being proposed under Bill twenty-three. Which is called the More Homes Built Faster Act. Uh, but what I can say at this stage is that some of the proposed changes to the Development Charges Act. Appear to be similar to the conditional exemption program. Uh, that's provided currently by the county in that the proposed changes to the D C Act would exempt. Affordable residential units from a development charge. But would require that the owner of those rental units enter into an agreement. That requires the units remain as affordable for a period of twenty-five years. So it almost aligns, uh, with the agreement requirement and that timeframe requirement, as I mentioned earlier. It's not clear as to whether the agreement is required to be registered on title. But it would be staff's recommendation, uh, for the reasons that were previously stated, that it it be registered on title. The proposed definition of affordable residential units under the proposed changes to the D C Act. Uh, for rental units would be no greater than eighty percent of the average market rent. And for ownership units, no greater than eighty percent of the average purchase price. And some of those details are still to be worked out, but what we've been hearing is that the province has committed to providing that information in terms of what the. Average purchase price and the average market rent, because as we know, that that changes quite frequently. Based on the proposed changes, we could see more agreements and deferred development charges throughout the province. And therefore, um, more reason that the approach that C M H C has taken, uh, to date. May need to be adjusted in order to align with the proposed changes to the D C Act. So as I noted, we're working on further reviewing those, uh, proposed changes and will be bringing forward a report to committee the whole on November tenth. But we wanted to highlight that what we're seeing in the proposed changes to the D C Act may, uh, exacerbate the current challenge being faced. With the conditional exemptions and C M H C funding. So the motion, uh, that is before you is to receive the report. That staff be authorized to use discretion on registering the notice of the deferral and conditional exemption agreement on title. But in no case shall be later than the time of occupancy. That such distract, discretion be submitted to the approval of C O or delegates and the Director of Legal Services. That a bylaw be brought forward to mend the D C deferral and conditional exemption policy. And that a letter be sent to C M H C from the warden requesting that C M H C reconsider their approach. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Randy. Questions, anyone? Counselors, whoever?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ward. Um, yeah, so the, Randy's quite right, the More Homes Built Faster Act. Twenty twenty-two, um, has a lot of legislation in it, and I would encourage anybody around the council chamber that hasn't read it yet to read it. It is quite onerous in terms of. If D Cs are canceled on every home that's priced less than eighty percent of the average resale. The average resale in the Blue Mountains last year for a single-family home not on water was one point five million. So that means every home that's built under one point two million. Would have no D Cs, which would just totally destroy our budget. Because we would not be in a position years down the road to build any infrastructure, cause we would not have collected. Like, I mean, I'm sure people would say, well, I priced my home at one point two five. I'll price it at one point one five now, but is that attainable? Um, probably not. For most people and, you know, every municipality will have its own level of, uh. What their average resale price is, but when you look at all the regulations in there. Uh, it's not quite clear how that gap in infrastructure funding, which will happen when D Cs. Are eliminated on these properties. Um, you know, is gonna be filled. I mean. You know, is the province gonna all of a sudden start giving us more money for infrastructure to replace the revenue we lost from D Cs? The other interesting thing in there is that you have to spend. Any D Cs, you gotta spend fifty percent of your D C reserves in, in within two years, I think it is, or one year. And. The, uh, it's a huge percentage, which if you're collecting D Cs for a sewage plant expansion. Those only happen every ten or twenty years, so you you gotta start building up that fund. It's a big ticket item. And to say you've got to spend sixty percent, um, you know, within the year. I mean, it's it's craziness. I mean. Uh, I would urge everybody around the 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 council table to to look at that seriously and everybody should be sending stuff in. Cause we have. You know, this thing about the deferred D Cs and the C M H C, our attainable housing corporation, we have that same issue. Um, you know, the C M H C, well, a lot of their regulations are now so far out of date, like, um. You know, there there's, they won't, you know, the the threshold for their, uh, rents. Um. You can't build a project that'll make money. The only way you can build a project is if it's gonna be perpetually subsidized if you go to those rent levels. And, uh, with inflation where it is, it's gonna just become worse and worse, but this is a very, uh. The More Homes Built Faster Act and it's Randy's quite right, it's gonna. Introduce this on a lot of things, cause it sounds like when you read the act and. You know, the regulations, like, you know, I don't think they're all out yet, but. How they're gonna implement that, there will be a diff, you know, a right requirement for twenty-five years, the. The building has to stay attainable, so there will have to be some penalty. I don't think they figured that out yet. Um. And how that works, if it's a reversal of the de- development charge def- deferral, then. Yes, there will be something on title. It would, it will take precedence to other lenders. Uh, it will be hard to get finance from either C M H C or the private sector. With that hanging over the project, so. There's, there's a lot to digest and and, you know, it's timely that this is before us, uh, on just these projects. But this is gonna be a far bigger problem, because looking at the legislation and trying to figure out how it works. Well, there's a lot of things in that that. Could create huge hardship down the road for us lower-tier municipalities, because. If we don't get those development charges on a huge proportion of of homes in our. In our jurisdiction, then we're gonna have a huge problem in funding infrastructure and, um. Nobody's actually said how that gap of funding is gonna be, um, you know. Made up. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and, uh, your comments are. Uh, so timely. I was on the way in this morning. I was listening to C B C radio, and if anyone's interested, uh. There is a piece on C B C radio today. You can probably catch it online on exactly, uh, this subject, Madam C A O.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Um, I know that, as Randy said, we are going to have a another, uh, staff report specifically on this topic. I I would say that, uh. Certainly, one of the comments that's been made, and this is going back a number of years, is the belief that municipalities. Have at their disposal some significant development charge reserves. And so when the the discussion about where's the money coming from? I think the the belief in some parts is that there are resources available that municipalities have. But I think it will be important for all of us to understand. What the state of your D C reserves are and looking at your asset management plans and. Um, how that cash flow is going to be working out over a number of years. Certainly, I don't think any of us were collecting money that didn't have a purpose. Um. One other just thing, just so everyone isn't, um, really blindsided. Um, the requirement as the legislation's been drafted is that a municipality shall spend. Or allocate at least sixty percent of the money for water, wastewater or roads. So it it it, you do have a little bit of legal room there, but thanks.
Anything to add, Randy? Okay. I'll go to the deputy warden first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and, uh, thanks for your report, Randy. Um, obviously, and 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 Mr. Ward, and I I caught some of that this morning on C B C as well, and basically. If you're taking away the D C charger is being deferred, that means your tax base is gonna carry it. Just picking up the slack. My question is, and I didn't get into into your other separate, uh. Uh, links here, but I presume that the D C charge is indexed over twenty-five years. So then, so basically if something falls through, they gotta pay it at whatever that would have been at. Is that correct?
Um, so just, I guess to clarify the question, is that in terms of the proposed changes, legislation changes or the? The current, uh, program, uh, for the county that that we have, sorry.
Glad clarity, just if you're deferring D C charges and if you, after twenty-five years, you don't pay them. But if something defaults, whether it's new or old. Are those? D C charges that are on the books indexed, because if somehow there's a default, you need to get at the current rate. Cause, cause if it's at the old rate, thirty, twenty, fifteen years later, maybe only half. What they're worth fifteen years later, so hopefully that would be indexed as. Or however that was followed along, if all of a sudden at year fifteen, they defaulted. They didn't have to pay the the current rate or or whatever that would be, and that's I just seeking clarity on that.
Thanks for that, that clarification. So, uh, as is currently calculated in terms of development charges, so, uh, development charges would have been. Uh, normally due at time of building permit application. So we calculate the development charges as they would have been. Uh, due at time of that building permit. As it currently stands, based on our interest rate policy, our D C interest rate policies. And this again is something that I think we would have, uh, been looking to revisit any. And this again is something that I think we would have uh been looking to revisit anyways, outside of the proposed legislative changes with the new council is, is the interest rate at this stage is only applied to what we call the DC freezes and not deferred development charges. Um, so uh, so it's something that I think we want to revisit though with the new council in terms of how we approach this, but I think based on the proposed legislation, we're, we're definitely gonna have to revisit uh, any and all existing programs as it relates to deferred development charges and condition exemption to development charges. Um, once, once we see further details on the proposed legislation. So so as it stands right now, it's, it would just be the, the DC amount that would have been paid or otherwise due at time of building permit, because that's when we would have collected it anyways. Um, so that's where it's currently calculated, so that the amount in the agreement is identified as, as, as that at this stage.
So, yeah, so then re, re, relooking at that, I think it's very important because if you get to year ten or fifteen, it's like huh, it's a small amount, I'll just default and, and then convert it over to regular housing. You gotta have that stick strong enough that keeps it at that point too, right? It's good, you wanna keep it so they don't just all of a sudden at year ten or fifteen, they decided, well, I'll just pay it off. Right? And, and carry on and then, and then you lose that, they, they have the rents and everything's back to normal. Then you, you lose that whole part of what you're trying to achieve, right? So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And uh, just for clarification, Randy, uh, in your recommendation here, are you asking us to consider um, changes to our policy, but also gonna send a letter to CMHC asking them to change their policy? And I, and I'm wondering, would we not be better to propose one or the other? Or, or, and not change our policy and hope the CMHC might do the right thing? Like, I, I would, I would suggest the letter to CMH, CMHC uh, would be uh, better uh, ahead of time and see if they'll change or consider changing or getting their stuff in a group. If in fact they are aligned with our goals or everyone's goals. And then if they're not prepared to do it, come back and then change our policy.
Um, good question, and obviously we'll take direction from council in terms of how you would like to proceed. Um, we proposed both the option of using discretion in terms of the timing of the registration, the notice, just because the risk is, is, is really low in terms of um, not registering up until time of occupancy. Um, uh, as mentioned, the, the opportunity for the developer to default under agreement during construction phase is quite minimal. It's almost non-existent. So, so we feel that risk is low. So that's where we feel that if there is an opportunity to work with, in this case, CMHC or any future financial institution lender on the timing, if that would help address some of their perceived risks, that's something that, that from a staff perspective, we're willing to uh, recommend to this council because we see that risk is low. But at the same time, recommending that uh, that the warden provide a letter to CMHC to uh, look at a different approach when it comes to this financial range of it, just because we see our goals aligning, that we're wanting to try and encourage more rental housing throughout in their case of through Canada, but in our case through great county.
Mr. Eternal?
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Just briefly and slight uh note further on Councilor McQueen's question about the indexing of charges, the actual indexed DCs can't be charged on a, a future collection of deferred DCs. Our present agreement does try to recoup that through uh charging interest. It's equivalent to the deferral, subject to a cap of, of twenty percent. Uh, but I think to Randy's core point that we need to look at this in the context of the new legislation, which we are still digesting. Uh, because it will be doing, I believe, probably some things with respect to interest rates. So we, we have some provision for it, but we need to really look at it in the bill twenty three context.
Looks like we've had sufficient discussion. Is it time to call the question? So we have a, a motion, first of all, to receive this report to allow staff to use their discretion about when to register the deferral and um, uh, to bring a bylaw uh, forward and that a letter be sent to CMHC, CMHC, C, CMHC um, requesting that they would consider their approach with respect to financing. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Um, I'm wondering, council, how everyone's feeling. It's almost an hour that we've been uh sitting. Is it time to maybe take a break and uh, and come back at it? Let's see if some heads nod, um, not nodding, but nodding in favor. Okay, so why don't we come back at ten past? Uh, eleven, so eleven, ten, we'll see you then.
Okay, call us back to order. We are now dealing with item seven B that puts Liz on deck. We're dealing now with the township of Southgate official plan. I need a mover. If I could please to put the item on the floor, moved by councillor Millen, seconded by councillor Woodbury. And Liz, you have the floor.
There we go. Wonderful. Thank you very much. So good day. My name is Liz Buckton and this is my first opportunity to actually present in this beautiful room with all of your smiling faces. So hello. I am a registered professional planner and I'm a recent addition to the planning department here at the county. And I'm here today to discuss the recommended approval of the Southgate official plan. County Gray of Gray is the approval authority for lower tier plans as you're aware. And the township adopted their official plan in May of this year. And so I've had the pleasure over the past two months since I've moved into the full time role with the county to work with the township planner Clint Strudwick and their consultant planner Ron Davidson on review of that adopted plan through the county planning lens. As shown is within the report that's been provided for consideration. We have identified a few minor typographic changes, some, some things maybe for clarity or for preference that we've recommended in terms of modifications. We've also recommended a number of modifications to incorporate some of the content and direction that was included within OPA eleven to the county official plan. And with that, I would note that some examples of those, those items are inclusion of the 25 year planning horizon for that plan. Inclusion of updated growth management figures as well as updating of the primary settlement area densities that were established within that amendment. There have been some minor updates also included regarding on farm diversified uses, but I will note for councils understanding that we have removed some of the modifications that related to the items that were not approved through OPA eleven last week. As you're aware, planners can go into great depth sometimes, lots of nuance and context and words. But today I just thinking I'll keep it very high level. And so what I would just suggest to you is that I certainly, I do have the modification table here, happy to address questions that may arise. But otherwise, I would just say that it is our opinion that the plan that is approved by the township and in front of you today, subject to the modifications would be having regard for the models of matters of provincial interest under the Planning Act is also consistent with provincial policy. And then conforms also to the Gray County official plan. And so staff do recommend approval of that plan, subject to the modifications. Thank you.
Very good. And congratulations on your first presentation here. You did a fine job. Council, councillor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and welcome Liz to the council chambers. I know you are somewhat less verbose than your esteemed colleague over there.
Yes.
But looking at the time of the day, I can see why. You're not holding us back from lunch. Nonetheless, I want to thank you on behalf of our staff and our council for all the good work that you've done, as well as the entire planning department. It's been quite an exercise, I understand. So thank you very much. I don't have any questions. I didn't say that. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, perhaps it's time to call the questions on the motion to receive the report and to approve the county's official plan with the modifications. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much, Liz. Okay, so we're on to item seven C now. Establishing committees and task forces that puts our clerk Tara on deck. I need a mover to put the item on the floor, moved by councillor Robinson, seconded by councillor Mackey. I miss you because you're so close to the edge there.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, county council. As we approach the end of this council term, staff thought that this would be a good opportunity to bring forward a report and an update on our current committee and task force structure. And recommend a way to move forward into the new term in a way that will keep our committees and task forces working effectively and efficiently. So currently active at Gray County, we have the accessibility advisory committee, the affordable housing task force, the agricultural advisory committee, the CEO performance evaluation committee, long-term care committee of management, the climate change task force, economic development planning advisory committee, tourism advisory committee, the long-term care redevelopment task force and a mental health and addictions task force. We are required by legislation to have some committees. They include the planning advisory committee, the accessibility advisory committee and a long-term care committee of management. The affordable housing task force, the climate change task force and the mental health and addictions task force are approaching the end of their mandate and the completion of their respective mandates. And staff are recommending that these task forces be dissolved at the end of this current council term. And that the discussions that previously took place at those tables occur going forward in newly organized committees or council as may be appropriate. The agricultural advisory committee, ADPAC and TAC provide the opportunity to merge together into one single committee and dissolve the three individual committees. And we'll have a a broad mandate and strategic focus to consider planning agricultural and economic development matters. This committee could also review and comment on climate change topics depending on the scope of those conversations. Staff are also recommending that a new community services committee be established to carry on the work of the mental health and addictions task force. And would also consider matters related to affordable housing. An urban road and road exchange task course is also recommended to provide input on the ownership and management of roads within Gray County. The report is also recommending to establish a policy which would lay out considerations to make whenever a new committee or task force is brought forward to be considered. It would consider items such as whether the committee is required by legislation, whether the proposed mandate is achievable and is aligned with Gray County's strategic direction. Will it operate effectively? And is there a more effective method of engagement that would assist in meeting that need? The considerations recognize that there are various methods of engaging outside of a committee structure. And that's important to keep in mind the organization's strategic objectives when a new committee or task force is proposed. So if this recommendation is supported, staff will bring forward a report with proposed terms of reference for a new community services committee, an urban road and road exchange task force and planning and economic advisory committee for council's consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Tara, for looking into this. It's certainly something that, you know, has been tossed around both this term of council and the previous term of council. When I first started, we, my first four years on county council, we had the four committees. And, you know, having lived through that structure and then the structure afterwards, I'm inclined to think that I liked those four committees that we had eight years ago. We were able to dig down into issues, whether it was planning, whether it was top social services, but we had the avenue. You know, mental health and addictions task force could have been done through our old social services committee. I'm not sure if the names are all still applicable, but I did like that, that system. Each member of county council sat on two different committees. So you had nine people sitting on each committee. You, you just got a sense when it got back to county council that, you know, the issues had been, you know, well explored. They got down into the weeds and it just gave you a better comfort level. When, you know, nine of your colleagues had really looked at something and it got back to county council. I personally, you know, liked the, the way it was then, and I'm wondering if we should go back and look at it. My only other comment to this report is agriculture is very, agriculture is very important in, in Gray County, number one business. I think the, the members, you know, on that committee are, you know, the grassroots membership of that committee. I would hate to lose that, that one agricultural committee. The other ones I can certainly see rolling into whatever the, the new committee format's going to look like. But agricultural one, I'm not sure people, you know, from our, our farms in the community are going to want to sit through all the other stuff that you would have to at a, you know, a broader base committee. So that's my thoughts is that we would maintain the agriculture advisory committee and examine the number of other, you know, committees that we need to have that would incorporate all the other work that the county's, county's doing. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Robinson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Through you to our clerk, I was wondering if you could just speak to the correspondence that was sent via the Gray Federation of Agriculture in terms of the sport for agriculture, whether it's in its own committee or pulled it into another committee. And then I'd like to speak further. Thanks.
Yes, we did receive correspondence from Gray Agricultural, sorry, the Gray County Federation of Agriculture. And I would have to pull it up again to confirm the exact message that they were conveying, but they did have some input on how they felt the, that organization represented farmers in Gray County and the agricultural community and had, I believe, some comments on the membership going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and certainly I would hope that our full county council would take into consideration the correspondence from Gray County Federation of Agriculture. They are concerned with the topics and hope topics move forward in terms of nutrient management, agricultural related land use policies, alternative energy resources, agritourism, value-added agriculture, agriculture, infrastructure and construction, agriculture education, specialty crops and any other emerging agriculture issues. So we're seeing that Gray County has a, a strong legacy and history with agriculture. And certainly I was most proud to, to bring forward for council's consideration, the establishment of a agriculture advisory committee for Gray County and, and as a second or councillor, Kivini, I was most pleased that, that you were involved in that and every single member of council in your, in your support for the committee. I too would like to see the, the continuation of the agriculture advisory committee for Gray County. If that is not possible, the next best thing would be to include it into another committee in order to keep the voice of agriculture alive and well, and certainly with respect to agriculture, I think it is absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, county council, and thanks for the comments. And I also will speak about the, with regards to the agriculture advisory committee. As a representative of Gray County on that OFA, I know they feel very strongly that this committee is so, so important to be there. We just witnessed this last, our last meeting with the, with our official plan eleven and the OFDUs where that was very much an input from that meeting and from the agricultural community itself. And I do have a copy of that letter, which councillor Robinson captured some of the points, the reason why. So I would like to move an amendment at, at a certain point that the agriculture advisory committee stays and at whatever, at the correct time, Mr. Warden, I will, I would move that if you want to take other discussions, but I will certainly at the right time, move a motion that the agriculture advisory committee stays.
Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and, and I would certainly second that amendment. It was something that I was going to bring forward and thank you to my colleague, councillor McQueen for doing that. So I will second that amendment.
I'm going to come to you, I promise. So I'm going to say that there's a motion by deputy Warden, seconded by councillor Robinson, and exactly what is that amendment? That it be a standalone committee? So when we're looking at the recommendations from staff, so it'll be community services committee, planning, economic and, and planning and economic advisory committee, urban road and road exchange task force and then agricultural advisory committee as a fourth bullet. Right, so we'll add a fourth bullet, right? Sorry, Madam CAO.
Thank you. I, I would suggest that the appropriate amendment, looking at Tara and Sarah here, you'll notice that in the resolution up above, it says the following be dissolved. So rather, I think we would just simply exclude ag advisory from the list of, of committees to be dissolved, if that's okay.
Accomplishes the same thing, right? Okay, so councillor Kivini, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And with that motion on the floor, I think I'm content. I was just going to add my support to the comments. It really has been a very educational experience sitting on that committee. The expertise of those members is, is quite phenomenal and I too would hate to see that lost. So if the motion goes around, I will be very happy.
I would agree with you, councillor Kivini. It has been very educational. Wanted to say something? Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I, I want to be clear with council that staff's intent here is in no way to stifle discussion or prevent good conversations from taking place. You'll notice on page sixty of your agenda, about, you know, three quarters of the way down, part of this report states that moving forward, staff are considering new forms of engagement to broaden the reach and depth of interactions between members of the public, elected officials and staff. Examples include other modes of participation such as forums and mixers, complete with industry panels, roundtable discussions and networking. In addition to these purpose-built events, staff will continue to engage and interact with stakeholders from all industry sectors, institutions, levels of government and the community through regular work plans as per staff's intentional boots-on-the-ground approach to planning, economic development and tourism and all of the other pieces that, that we touch. So I just wanted to be clear that we are really focused on ensuring that there's a lot of value in our interactions with all of these people and that the, the committees and task forces definitely play an important role, but there are other ways too, I think, of meeting with people and talking about important issues that a sector or group is facing. And we would like to really work together with yourselves and those groups to explore those and move things forward.
Thank you. With that said, are there further questions or comments? Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And through you to, to Kim and Tara. The two committees that are proposed, they could be, well, they're pretty broad. Their workload could be pretty intense. What is your thoughts on the frequency of meetings, once a month, full day meetings? Have you put any thought towards what the agendas might look like for those two committees?
I think as we, first step was to get your support and direction today to move forward. The next step then, as Tara's mentioned, is to provide a terms of reference. And look at that, I think coming out of that terms of reference and the discussion. And look at that, I think, coming out of that terms of reference and the discussion um with the incoming council. I I I think we'll be in a better place to be able to say, certainly. You know, just on the surface of it, I I can see that there'll be um at least bi-monthly. Meetings, but on the on the planning side of things, depending on. Um, you know, how this all shakes out uh with the new bill and that it may be that there's more. You know, more workload on the on the front end of this as we try to make some pretty significant adjustments. To uh some of the the policies and procedures that we have in place.
Thank you, Randy. I see your head bobbing furiously, so maybe you have something to say.
Uh, just further to Kim's comments in terms of, um, you know, as as she noted, uh, uh, there's wasn't a, uh, you know, staff's intent to. Stymie any discussions. We wanted to explore some other avenues and opportunities to engage. Uh, specifically as it relates to the agriculture community, because that seems to be a s- a topic of discussion. I think there's also times where staff felt it was difficult to pick and choose which which committees, certain topics. Definitely overlap with a lot of the committees that were un- un- in place. Um, whether it be Affordable Housing Task Force, or the Planning and Economic Development Committee, or the Climate Change Task Force, or the Air Culture Advisor Committee. Um, in some cases, there was, you know, staff reports that could have went on all four of those committees, depending on the topic. And so that's where we thought by combining uh some of those uh groups uh together that we could have then a wholesome discussion about. Uh, and making sure that there's proper representation from, you know, the agriculture community, the business community, the tourism community. So that we can get that that sense and that discussion uh with a number of representatives. So that's that's part of some of the rationale as to why. Uh, the staff recommendation was to combine some of those those committees and groups into one. And to make sure that through the terms of reference that we have proper representation from all those sectors. Uh, because it's it's vital that we have uh the direction and 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 advice and guidance from those various sectors. So that was. Part of the rationale. I just wanted to uh outline that uh for council's uh attention, just uh as so. Why we were thinking of of the way we're recommending the approach.
Thank you. The Warden McQueen.
Yeah, I have more discussion on the committees, but right now we have the amendment motion on the floor, so maybe I'll wait till we deal with that, and then I'll speak to the committees.
Very good. So I think it's time to call the question. So on the amendment, to be clear, the um. The amendment is that the agricultural advisory committee be excluded from the list of committees to be dissolved. Right? Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is carried. Okay. To uh to this. Councillor Body, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is um to vote on the amendment, the motion to amend. Councillor Mackey.
In favor?
Councillor Mackey is in favor. Councillor Gamble is absent. Councillor Burley is absent. Councillor Carlton.
In favor.
Councillor Carlton is in favor. Councillor McQueen. Councillor McQueen is in favor. Councillor Desai. Councillor Desai is in favor. Councillor Patterson. Councillor Patterson is in favor. Warden Hicks.
Yay.
Warden Hicks is in favor. Councillor Columbus. Councillor Columbus is in favor. Councillor Kivini. Councillor Kivini is in favor. Councillor Body. Councillor Body is opposed. Councillor O'Leary. Councillor O'Leary is in favor. Councillor Woodbury. Sorry, Councillor Woodbury is absent. Councillor Milne. Councillor Milne is in favor. Councillor Soever. Councillor Soever is in favor. Councillor Bornion is absent. Councillor Robinson.
In favor.
Councillor Robinson is in favor. Councillor Hutchinson.
In favor.
Councillor Hutchinson is in favor. That motion carries sixty-four to eight.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn to, oh. Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, County Council. I'm going to think, was it the first term of this council where we met at Beaver Valley? Uh, Ski Hill. And we had a bit of a strat plan, and we talked a bit about committees. I remember Council Mellon talking about the old committees as well, and uh. I think just to to follow on that, there were four committees, TAPS, Social Services, Finance, and Planning. And uh, it's a sort of, and they're not far off of what the three that you have here. Other than finance, uh, and you know, finance sort of stands on its own in the sense, and it's a bigger one during budget time and stuff like that itself. So I guess my question here is, um, are you proposing, so they were just all county council? Those committees were all county council divided by nine, as Council Mackey is saying. Are you suggesting that some of these will include some public? Okay, so then that that changes that whole perspective of what it was before, which is not a bad thing. But uh, as as Councillor Mackey said, and Councillor Mellon would remember that each of those four committees, there was a chair that then reported and took the questions, and we all probably remember that, and. And you know, that to be also at the beginning of this term or partway through the term, we created the Climate Change Task Force, the. Affordable Housing Task Force, because there was probably something wasn't there to have that, have that. So we created it. And I guess that is is the clerk has said, is if there are new things, there will be a a report comes back that justifies a new a new meeting coming forward. But obviously, we as a county council determined or decided that, you know, there was an opportunity or a reason to create those special committees, and that can happen at any time as well. I just bring those up for uh for discussion points, because if you're including public, that's that's not a bad thing, because you're you're broad, you're you're broadening, you're 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 broadening. You're making your base broader for 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 that, but. It changes the dynamics to what it was before in the sense of just county council as well. So there's a lot of uh, and and I think you have to be. Have to be careful, and I know we've found this in ourselves at our lower tiers. Sometimes you make a committee too broad, people. Don't want to be engaged because it's too broad, and I think that's also the other side of of the of the equation as well. Some people have interest in certain parts. But not. The big picture, because it's just they don't have time, it's, you know, and that sort of thing. So I think we have to take those in consideration. Just some comments, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments? Can I call the question then on the main motion, which has now been uh amended to exclude the agricultural advisor committee? From the recommendation to dissolve uh certain committees. So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, is Ann Marie doing um?
She is.
Ann Marie, you're on deck. Going to give us a verbal update on emergency shelters.
Good morning, everyone. I had said a couple of meetings ago that I would be here to give a um update on our emergency short-term shelter program. Um, as you're aware, we brought the um emergency shelter program in-house about five weeks ago, so it's very young to us still. Um, in order to link with some of the services that we already have in the county, so our SOS Outreach Paramedic Program. Um, a lot of the people that are experiencing homelessness are on Ontario Works, so it works with bringing in. Um, to a house so that we have our staff that can also assist, and of course, we have our by-names list. So we have seen a huge increase in the community. Uh, in need when it comes to people accessing emergency services and the complexity of the needs that are out there. Um, since two thousand and twenty, uh, the need has increased four times. So we have identified and are working with about a hundred and seven people that are experiencing chronic homelessness within our community. That means that they have been homeless for more than six months at a time. In two thousand and twenty, we were working with about twenty-five to thirty people in 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 the same situation. Um, so in the last month, we have worked towards doubling the number of motel rooms that are available for people to stay in. We now have. Um, agreements in place with throughout the county thirty motel rooms, and I can tell you that they are full every night. Um, and we haven't even hit winter yet. So we definitely are looking at a more dire situation um right now and for the next little while. So last month, we provided nine hundred nights of shelter at a cost of around eighty thousand dollars. So this is obviously not sustainable with the funding that we received from the province. We have not heard yet what money we will get from the province for next year, but what we receive right now, this is not a a full-time annual uh solution. Um, so we are working with people, so we work to determine if there are other options that they can go to. We call it diversion. So is there a family member, a friend? Um, an acquaintance somewhere else that they've had shelter and supports before that we can offer? And if not, then we do offer um a motel room to that person. If it's during the daytime, it's our staff that's reaching out. And if it's uh in after hours, then it is two-one-one that is arranging that for them. Once in motel, um, we have an outreach worker or navigator that meets with the person at the motel and tries to help them form a plan for moving forward. The motels are low barrier, they're not no barrier, and the owners are very supportive of the program. But there are rules and there are expectations, and some of our people are asked to leave motel rooms. So that creates a very difficult situation um when there is not another option out there. Um, along with the increase in numbers, we also see an increase in the complex needs. So we are finding sometimes that those needs exceed the level of care and support that we can provide in our emergency shelter program. And that twenty-four-hour mental health or health is required, healthcare is required. Um, that we do have a percentage of of people that um that that need that have that need and that housing just doesn't exist in our area. Our community partners are working hard, GBSHS, our our Greater Health Services are working hard um to develop and get Bayview underway. And the county is working with CMHA, Canadian Mental Health Association, on Fourteenth Street. So we are providing a unit and Canadian Mental Health Association is going to provide those supports. But currently, right now, um, it is difficult for us to find places for people to go. Um, we also have found that some of the people that we have housed because of a lack of supports, whether it's a lack of specific supports, hours of supports. Or people not wanting to engage with their supports, that they do sometimes lose housing, and this is part of a homelessness cycle. So sometimes you're in and out of homelessness because of your situation. So I just wanted to be forward and bring forward some of our barriers, um, not enough provincial funding, certainly something that we can advocate for. Um, not necessarily the appropriate level of care housing available in this area, although there is some coming, which is great. And not enough supports for people that when we do house them, that they can remain housed. And of la- of course, lastly, not enough affordable housing, period. Um, a person that is on Ontario Works receives seven hundred and thirty-three dollars a month. And rent for a room now is seven hundred dollars. So it is a very dire situation, um, unfortunately. So not to leave us on everything negative, I wanted to point out some of the successes that we've had too. Um, we have successfully housed eleven people last month, and they still remain housed at this time. We've connected many people with supports, whether that's health, mental health, food security. Um, we have increased our motel rooms, and we continue to work and increase our stock. And data, we are collecting the necessary data that will let us know and better understand the needs and the gaps and allow us to provide for any funding that may come forward. So there are some excellent things that are happening. We are moving forward with looking for opportunities for more uh long-term uh emergency shelter. We're advocating for more funding, and we are being creative with the funding that we do have. So the one last thing I wanted to chat about was um this winter and how tough it's going to be, and if I can encourage all of you. Um, to ensure that there are warming centers that are going to be available in your area because they are going to be needed. Um, we, next week, we have a housing strategy meeting with local CAOs and planners and ourselves. Um, and that will be part of our conversation next week, just to ensure that there are warming centers available everywhere throughout Gray County. Um, we are working with um Safe and Sound and are providing funding for them to provide some some um warming center um and after hours. Um, for some of our more vulnerable uh populations this winter too. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Anne Marie. Um, I wonder if I could ask a question. I see hands, but you mentioned the um. Uh, the eighty thousand and something not being sustainable. Can you cover it out again? I I I missed the detail of that.
So it costs eighty thousand dollars in motel stays last month alone. And that is not a sustainable amount of money for the funding that we currently get from the province.
Thank you for that. I saw some hands. Councillor Robinson, I'll go with you first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much for the uh the presentation. I'm wondering, as uh the lower tiers get prepared to assist. With the warming centers and recognizing you'll be doing a further outreach to uh CAOs. Uh, of our lower tiers, but could you please identify what the um, what the planning is needed? What is it that is required for a um. Warming center that will provide the comfort um for our residents? Thank you.
I think a warming center is just that, some place for someone to go during the daytime evening so that they have somewhere that they can go to. Um, you know, many people often will go to a Tim Hortons or a a a a place, but sometimes we know that there's not always a dining room open at this point. Um, and that um a a person just needs a place to go. Um, lower tiers are excellent at providing that services, and it's something that is is often um. You know, staff will be well aware of maybe what area and where might be appropriate for your um specific town. Or center. Um, but certainly what we can do is we can provide some numbers too on on where we're seeing uh more people that might need support, so that might. Um, have some input on where a warming center might be.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and appreciate the uh the opportunity for a follow-up. Often, um, at the lower tiers, um, it and um. It is most appropriate that you follow the weather, whether it is the temperature or snow falling or or any other um. Type of uh uh climate um variable that uh it would uh identify that a warming center is needed. But I'm wondering if there is perhaps something more uh that should be looked at in terms of uh recognizing the weather. But is there any other criteria that would uh perhaps trigger the necessity to open a warming center? Thank you.
Certainly, um, we could definitely reach out, and this is something that we will have a conversation with with the our at our meeting next week, but. Uh, definitely, we were seeing a larger influx of people that in need, um, then certainly that might trigger um another um a warming center to be of need.
Madam CAO? Oh, you're fine, okay. Um, oh, I have a list, actually. Next is a councillor Mel, then O'Leary, and then I'll be going to. So councillor Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks, Anne Marie, for the uh somewhat sobering report. Um, I'm just wondering what type of housing, or rather. Are there restrictions on the type of housing? Uh, that could be provided to people that need overnight uh accommodation? Um, I know you mentioned motels, but. Um, you know, if if a municipality had access to. You know, a house with rooms in it, like a rooming house arrangement kind of thing, is is that something that's acceptable, or are there restrictions that that would not be uh a- appropriate?
I can't really think of any restrictions. Um, certainly, we do have a few landlords that have um some transitional housing, so they have some units that they will take people. Of need, so possibly they have a a house that has four separate rooms in it, um, so that we do use that. Um, so that could be a possibility that could be explored with a with a municipality for certain.
Councillor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, Anne Marie. Can you talk more about the numbers? Are are the are these local people mostly? Um. I also want to know what other municipalities are doing. I don't know, like Allison Kitchen or Barry, like, is is other municipalities doing what we're doing, putting people in hotels? Or closer to home, is Bruce County doing that? Or I I guess the reason I want to know, are we drawing people here because we're the only ones putting them in hotels? Or just just talk about those numbers?
Um, numbers fluctuate, right? So we, I said we housed eleven people. Numbers fluctuate, right? So we, I said we housed eleven people, which is awesome, but we probably had, you know, more people show up. From what we're seeing, the majority of the people are local. They're ours, they're homegrown, they're people that were hanging on by a thread before, and now the thread's not there. So certainly, we are seeing it's local, and yes, there are a lot of people that are using the motel system, especially in rural areas. It's, it's easier to have spots in, in larger areas so that we can, we can direct people there. And I was at a meeting in Toronto with our forty-seven service managers last week, and we're all in the same situation, all experiencing the same thing. And, you know, all looking for answers. It's a huge, complex problem. It's a systems issue. There's many things that are needed in order for, for something like homelessness to be eradicated. A living wage, you know, different healthcare and mental health options for housing for people. And obviously, emergency short-term shelters, and, and that's the whole idea of that short-term shelter is it's to help someone get to that next step. But what we're lacking sometimes now is that next step, so that housing, that appropriate mental health, twenty-four seven care housing, that kind of thing.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Mary Richard, Anne Marie. Just kind of following up on what Counselor O'Leary was talking about, do you have any sense of the per diem rates? If you want to, you know, use per diem as a cost per night of stay. Using motels as opposed to using, you know, a ten-bed shelter or a twenty-bed shelter. And you mentioned Bayview, and can you just, what are the plans for Bayview? How many beds will it be? And, you know, I think for some of these people who need having other resources available, plopping them in a motel. You know, even though you've got an outreach worker coming to see them, there's still food preparation. There's still a lot of necessities of life that they're not, not getting, where at least a shelter, you know, can have a cafeteria, can have. Other support workers in there to help, you know, with that guidance that they require. So I'm just wondering, the long-term plan, are we trying to get away from motels? And what's the cost difference between the two? Thanks.
There's pros and cons for both approaches, and a lot of people, a lot of areas during COVID moved to the motel model. Simply because congregate living itself is prone to spreading viruses and whatnot, right? So it made more sense. Looking at motel rates, it is, it is, can be costly, definitely. Most of the places though that we look at, we're fortunate enough to have some ability for people to have food. And that's something that we do provide with our outreach workers too. And we try to work our best to ensure that there is food security, whether that's through, through other agencies in town. And we're lucky that way, that we are a small community, and the fact that we can offer probably some more of those resources than other areas might be able to. Shelters themselves, there's pros and cons. We have a lot of people that may not do well in a congregate setting and probably do better on their own. And then there's others that would be fine in a congregate setting, so it, it's a difficult call, cost-wise. They're probably around a similar cost when it comes to the twenty-four hour staffing and security and food prep and all of that that would need to be provided.
Thank you. I did see another, oh, Deputy Warden, did I see another hand here as well? So Kivony, I'll come to you next. I'll go to Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks, Anne Marie. Just a little bit of a high level. I'm not sure if it was a number years back, maybe fourteen or whatever, but there was a really cold, hard winter. And there was people that couldn't pay their heating for their homes, and there was people donating firewood and, and all that stuff. We know the price of home heating oil, everything's up. Is that another preparation that you're going to have to be telling with? Because obviously, if, you know, inflation's up, people only have so much money. I don't see any comments here. Thank you.
And the United Way does have a program that will assist people, but right now, even they're struggling with numbers and funding for that. And there is a time now, and so since that meeting and since all the good work that has gone on. People can, can no longer have their heater, their hydro turned off in the wintertime too, so that, that is an assistance. But then again, there is having to catch up on that bill in the springtime, so again, due to need. And I'm expecting it to be even more need this year, that, that there are more funds needed and required for those programs.
Thank you, Counselor Kivony.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and some of my thoughts have been covered, but I just wanted to ask Anne Marie if I may. Thinking of our own food bank, which I know really well, and wondering about the relationship with the food banks. Because I know certainly they are aware of the people in need, and if there's an opportunity to build awareness through the food bank and their volunteers. That may help to find in our own particular local communities some, if there are houses available or rooms or anything of that nature. I'm just wondering sort of about the promotional side of things and how, how we can make our local communities really aware of the need. And how we can engage our community members in, you know, in the willingness to support and to reach out. And to potentially, you know, provide a space for someone in need.
And there's. There's lots of programs that sometimes that works when it's a community agency. That will be providing some of those services and looking for those services. Certainly, when it comes to. What we do, we work closely and we have calls weekly with a lot of all of our support services that are around the area. So I think when we're looking at support for food banks and when we're putting connections between housing and food banks, that's there because we're all sitting at the same tables. But if you're thinking of people in the community that might have an extra room available for somebody. We don't really have a connection spot for that, but I think they sometimes happen organically, but certainly something we could bring back to that table. Thank you.
Counselor Mackey.
Thanks. Anne Marie, is there any connection between your workers and the police agencies if a high-risk individual is going to be placed in a community?
No. We work with everybody and we do work with the police. The police are aware of, you know, any situations that we might run into. We do work with police. We don't often get a, you know, person communication that there may be somebody in community that would be high-risk.
There are mental health workers that are working with the police, and certainly the police know two-on-one, I believe, right? Okay, I do not see any other, oh, Deputy Warden.
So, Mr. Warden, it kind of comes, I've had a business reach out to me, the availability of all kinds of apples. And they said they're willing to give it to, to the food bank. They said they have ten acres of apples that are still on trees. And, and it's in Ottawa, and I'm just texting with them right now. Any suggestion how that could happen or make that work?
We can certainly put you in touch with a local food bank. That'd be great. If you want to text me some information, I can make that connection.
Okay, I think we've had very good discussion on this. We, there's nothing to vote on. It's just a verbal report, so thank you very much for that. I'm looking for a motion to take us into closed session. That committee of the whole does now go into closed session. Pursuant to section two, three, nine, sub-two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one is amended to discuss. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality specifically around emergency shelters. Very interesting. So moved by Counselor Columbus, seconded by Counselor Carlton. I've missed you a few times. I wanted to catch you this time.